A reminder, the meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel in the near future. No cost for public hearing, there's no old business on our docket. As for new addictions discussion, Linda Kreitzer is here to talk about Lexus Nexus, Lexus Nexus Agreement, correct?
Not Lexus Nexus, I'm talking about the West Contract. It's what we're proposing. I sent you a whole packet on it with a spreadsheet on the cost. We're looking to, our contract with Lexus is up on August 31st, 2018. And in my letter, I enumerated the reasons we want to go with West. For the next five years.
So, can you just summarize your reasons for switching to us or wanting to switch to us?
It has a better platform, it's easier to use. The contract includes 15 attorney users and 15 non-attorney users, where Lexus offers only 11. But the difference in that is really substantial because they just differentiate. We never did our MDJs as attorneys. West does it that way. The patron access, which is our public access for the law library, is a lot less for, through West, although the other contract is a little bit higher. We share that with Forest County, we share both contracts with Forest County and with...
Do they reimburse us?
They do, 20%. The patron access, right now, the only way we can use it is by having a terminal here just outside our office. We previously had it in the law library, but we moved it out. And anybody from Forest County had to come here to use it. Well, with the West contract, we can have two terminals. We can't have concurrent use of it, but they can at least do the legal research in Forest County, which is substantially better for us and for the individuals that are using it. West is offering us a pre-trial period, which we had West before, before we had this Lexus contract. The reason we went with Lexus is because of the cost. West would not even negotiate with us at a lower cost.
But you were able to do that this time?
This time we were, because they want us back, probably.
How long ago did you start the Lexus Nexus?
Five years ago.
Okay, so literally the contract we're under currently is the one that we negotiate with?
Yeah. Okay, let's see here. They're going to give us the free trial through May until the end of our contract. I was able to negotiate a little bit lower cost that they originally offered. And the patron access.
Does any of this have to go through RIT, like with VolGamer?
No.
Okay.
No, and I did a spreadsheet. It is a little bit more, but it's not substantial. Our users prefer West.
Okay, my question is, is like I noticed the numbers you put together, are you just doing like just a general, okay, for five patrons, this is what it costs for five patrons? Or is this like a little overall cost for the...
Overall cost for each year.
Ooh, okay, like for total?
Yes.
Okay. So the 111, 115, those are both bottom line numbers?
That's for a five-year contract for both.
So it'd be roughly 3,000 more over the five-year period?
Correct.
Yeah, which is...
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions?
No.
This is ready to pass in the next meeting. Is this transfer over?
I don't believe so, unless you gave it to them, but...
Well, I doubt it, but yeah.
And if we go with this contract, some, the prior contract is always with the commissioners. Commissioners have to sign that. We'd have to notify Lexus that we're going to terminate as a...
Is there a window of time that you need to sever the contract?
I don't know, I'd have to dig out the whole contract.
We want to make sure we do that in time.
I'll look at that.
Okay.
All right, anything else for Linda? Any public questions?
Actually, I do have a question. I get legal books for the BEI through Lexus Nexus every other year. Now, is that going to have an effect on that?
No. This doesn't have anything to do with written publications. This is only for online legal research.
Anything else?
Although, the only other thing is that, we did it one time five years ago. I put together a package deal where we looked, you can do this through Lexus and I believe through, I know we can do it through West. You get a discount, and we pulled together under one account all our subscription, written subscriptions. And if you wanted to negotiate with them for maybe a lower price for our written subscriptions, instead of each department having their own...
Yeah, definitely.
You might want to contact them about that.
Who masters that currently, the subscriptions?
We do it for the law library, every office has their own.
Has their own, and they're in contact individually with the agency.
And we did put it together at one time, we didn't go with a contract. West gives us like a 50% discount or a partial discount on subscriptions. I don't know what Lexus would do, because we don't get very many from Lexus. But you might want to look at that.
Yeah.
Pull that together, because they will do, they probably will do a contract on the written subscriptions.
Yeah, we could have the fiscal office dig through the bills from Lexus Nexus and West and then figure out which departments have what.
Because that's a substantial cost.
Yeah, because I...
Tim, could you relay that to Eric?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Isn't it better to have everything under one contract?
Yeah, I mean...
Money-wise, you would save, wouldn't you?
Absolutely.
Well, we'll look into it. Anything else related to Lexus Nexus-West Law? Okay. Have either of you had a chance to think about feasibility study?
I, yeah, we're going to discuss that today, and I'm still really not prepared to discuss it.
The only thing I'm ready to discuss, I think, would be, what I would ask for is approval for the fiscal office to go ahead and create a application for the parking lot and send it into P-COM, because they have this program that I think we should try to utilize.
Absolutely.
So my thought is, we'll pull some NASH money from the Ralph's Road Fund, use either P-Corp or P-COM to dedicate 15, or actually increase to 20 grand this year, and then see what more we can get.
Well, talking to Eric, he said that there are two $20,000 pots that haven't been touched. And my thing is, is that although we did the feasibility study, they're still working on the parking study. That should be finalized in the next week. So what I would say is, is if, like, that's something that needs to be done immediately.
Yes, it needs to be done...
I don't want to say immediately, but like if we're going to do something this year...
Right, and I would advocate putting it out there immediately, like as soon as we can, because we've had a lot of trouble the last couple of years getting paving throats, period. So this is a bigger project, too.
Yep.
Okay, so we have general agreement to at least go out to bed on that, pending...
Well, I think that, I think the idea is, is we would get what the engineer brings back to us, and then, and then put it out there based on whatever specs we're comfortable with from them.
And go ahead and apply, have the fiscal office apply for the grants.
Yeah, what I would say is, is in the meantime, get the fiscal office lined up with funding for the project, just generally speaking, so that we have a cap of like what we're willing to work with.
Right, and we did dedicate some of our capital budget towards this as well. I don't recall how much.
Yeah, we'd have to look at that, too.
But that was something that was on our list.
Because essentially, just for everybody's information, we, as a part of the overall feasibility study, we had the architectural slash engineering firm look at parking within the county. There was a rough proposal that was sent to, or wasn't sent to us when we did the review of the feasibility study. They, they had a few sheets that they were still working on related to the parking study. There are two major reasons to do the parking study and to work on a reformed parking setup. One is due to the change in single point of entry, we're having a lot of issues with people walking in the parking lot even more so than normal, and that's a liability to the organization. So part of this parking study is going to involve creating a path or a sidewalk that runs along the side of the building so that people do not walk like through the parking space. And also to address like ice, ice and snow accumulation along that stretch as well in order to limit slipping and accidents of that nature. So that's one piece of it. The second piece is, is the parking lot is in a state of disrepair, it needs to be redone. So we'd rather do it, you know, or we need to take care of it, we can only patch it so much for so long. The third reason is, is there are some ADA issues that we need to address around the courthouse that's a part of the last parking bill that need to be done as well in order to bring the whole setup up to date. So those are the reasons that it's a priority. And as a result of all of the various safety issues, this is a project that falls under the auspices of our P-Corp and P-COM grants through CCAP. And they have pools of money to grant to counties in order to do upgrades that will help with safety and prevent, you know, injuries and other insurance issues.
Okay, good. Anything more to say on the feasibility study then? Should we just push it off for another week and talk about it next week?
Yeah, well, honestly, I'm not going to be here next week.
Oh, yeah.
Because of the Human Services Summit, so the following, and frankly, I would be completely buried with that, so the follow, I think a week from Monday would be enough time to like revisit the feasibility study.
So May 7. I will not be here either, because I'm going to the Knox Law then.
I will not be here either.
All right, so let's just cancel next Monday's work session. And we'll move the topic of discussion to the...
Yeah, because there's, there's a lot to look at with that still.
And by then, I certainly think I should have the retirement stuff together. Can you just schedule a meeting for me and we can actually do it? Good, good, good. Anything else we should talk about at the next work session that you can think of? I mean, obviously, you can still get it to him later, but I just...
Yeah, I'm sure there's, there's stuff left.
Okay. Moving on to, what's next? Public comment, any public comment? All right. Projects, any project updates?
I'm going to be putting out a news release sometime today, I keep meaning to do it. A week ago, we had our first meeting of the redevelopment task force. It was, it was very productive, certainly far more serious than the marketing task force. A lot of it has to do with the project itself being a lot more nitty-gritty, I think. The, the group is divided up with chairs for each of the five areas of focus. They've scheduled meetings in order to, in order to discuss all their various issues. What I was going to do is catalog all of the meetings and then send invitations to the commissioners so that they care to go and see what's going on or provide input, that they're welcome to attend. And also the, the public meeting agenda, which has been posted in the newspaper, I'll forward that to you as well, so that if you want to attend those meetings and add information to it, you'd be welcome to. All the subcommittees are asking for volunteers to be involved in them or people that are interested in them. If, if there are people that are interested in serving on the task force, they should just come and see me and be more than happy to work with them, to get them on an appropriate committee. And I'm very excited to see how things go. Everybody seemed like they were ready to hit the ground running, and they're already kind of taking off and doing their own thing, so that's good. There have been, oh, I'd also just, to go along with that, with the weekly meetings at the townships, we've had an enormous amount of conversation about blight and about, and about redevelopment issues in the RDA. It's definitely a major concern for many of the townships who are having a difficult time dealing with blighted property and also permitting and code enforcement have also been issues that they've talked a lot about. So that's it.
Okay. From my part, first voting machines. So there's this, this Secretary of State sent out an email, was it last week, that said something about having a little vendor show down in Harrisburg on Thursday. I'm already planning on going down on Thursday for a conference in the evening, but I figure if I just went early, I could hit that. Have you heard any more about it? Okay, I'll look into it. Or would you, would you mind seeing if it's still go where it is?
Still go, I know that for sure, yeah.
Okay, if you can shoot me over details, that'd be great. And if there needs to be registration or anything, could you just go ahead and register me?
I can't remember if we brought this up at the last meeting or not, where we discussed the election machines, but I just wanted to have a brief conversation about the whole issue with the decertification of machines that's been discussed at the state level. I just wanted to share that we, at the Northwest County Commissioners Meeting, Doug Hill shared this, and this is something that I had never considered before, but apparently is now becoming an issue that the governor's office, I don't think, had considered, which is the, like in our county, the commissioners are the board of elections, and so next year will be an election year for the commissioners, and they technically cannot serve on the board of elections. So how they could purchase or lease or negotiate contracts on new machines is not feasible as the board of elections, and it creates this weird conflict that I think somebody's going to have to resolve at the state level in order to do what they're discussing. That said, they also, I've seen numbers where they're talking about the state potentially helping with funding for some of these, but the money...
Not much.
Well, the money, well, it was, yeah, it was like, it was like, well, they talked about, we're giving you millions of dollars, but when you chopped it up into 67 pools, it was like, it was like peanuts.
We're getting 48,000 or something.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's like, by two machines.
Yeah, or lease them for one year, maybe. Yep. Well, anyway, I guess I'll have a little bit, can you also give me a list of like what we would need so that when I go down there, I can even just start throwing around?
Well, what we need depends upon what system we go with. I mean, if we go with a total DRE, that's one thing. If we go with a ballot marking machine with optical scanners, that's another thing. If we go paper and have scanners in every precinct, that's a whole nother thing, so...
I just want to start getting someone who's ballpark figures is all I'm trying to get at. Because right now, I have no idea whether it would be like 50,000 a month, a year in a lease, or if it would be 200.
And that amount depends on what the state certifies.
It will, it will. Well, I'd assume if they're coming to this event, the state is likely to certify.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think, I mean, I would just say my general recommendation is to get away from the DRE machines, just because then you're going to have a couple of machines at least per precinct.
I kind of like the ballot marking machines, because basically, it's like a touchscreen, where they vote on the touchscreen, but when you're done voting, then the strip comes out, and then it goes over and goes into an optical scanner. So, you know, it's kind of like what they're used to, but yet fulfilling our needs, too.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at it more from like just a general cost standpoint of trying to like minimize the number of machines that we need and...
And see, that's where election reform can come in, because of the vote centers that we could have and this and that that we can't have yet.
Yeah.
And that all goes back to election reform.
Yeah. Because you basically can have, like what Lisa's talking about, which is a machine that you do the thing on, it pumps out a ballot, you put it into the optical scanner, or you do it where you have a paper ballot, they fill it out, and it goes into the optical scanner, gets scanned. Like naturally, my first thought is, is I want to get rid of as many machines as possible. But they all, I mean, there are challenges either way. It's just something to consider, anyway.
Okay, well, I guess we'll move that up and queue to a little bit more urgent than important that was. Any update on the online GIS stuff? Did we put that...
We're, I, I talked to, I've been, I'm in ongoing conversations with both the solicitor and people in assessment and the IT department about coming up with other solutions for it. It's my opinion that we need to change vendors in order to get the GIS data online the way that we would like it. I, my next kind of perspective on it is, is to discuss either getting quotes from Tyler Technologies or other organizations. The problem, again, in my opinion with Tyler's, is that they're a very expensive solution. They're state-of-the-art, that it would tie into pictometry and some of the other things that we're doing. But I think it's time to have a conversation about having a different vendor for our assessment data, just because we've not, the situation with vision has not been positive.
All right. Okay.
Still working on it. This Sunday is the start of the Human Services Summit with the family night. It's from 5:00 to 7:00 on the second floor of the, the Talk Building or the Allegheny Community Center. Child care is provided, there'll be refreshments, encouraging families that are, you know, that have children or family members that are involved with human services to attend in order to provide feedback and, you know, discuss information as a part of the overall Human Services Summit. And then Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday is going to be the summit with the providers between, and other interested people, between, it's like 1:00 and 5:00. And I sent, obviously, an invitation, another like invitation to you guys this morning, just to say that commissioners are obviously welcome to attend, and so far, we've got it completely booked up. Everybody, I don't want to say everybody, we, we invited some 40-plus agencies, including law enforcement, you know, health and human services, people in housing and other areas. And of that pool, we've got, we limited the seats to 30, and we filled them completely. So it should be a good group, and things are progressing there nicely. Looking forward to seeing how it shakes out.
Okay. One thing I wanted to add was, I had Mo Rolik in, was that last week, Public Radio Communications Program? And Jeff and I agree we'll stick around for most of the meetings, especially Morris, who weren't able to make it. Would it be all right with the all if I bring them back to talk at our May 7 work session about the radio system proposal?
I don't have a problem with that.
Great, great, and I'll invite, I'll invite the sales guy to that. Last update for me, I have, you know, we've been talking since we got elected about some of the lack of documentation when it comes to process and procedure, so particularly related to HR, prioritize making a few diagrams to simply show. I did this in fiscal last year, you may recall, made a couple, just so that everyone was clear how to get requisitions through the process. So I went ahead and did this with employee hiring as well. I figure we should make one on discipline as well, on how to, are there any others that jump out to you as things that we need to document exactly what happens and how I should, and by the way, I don't envision this necessarily being, I'm happy to format it and make these, kind of go over it, but I think that the department heads closest to it should be kind of making the first draft of it. This, so this I just, I did, but it only is kind of an example to show people like what I would want drawn out. Anything else that jumps out or something that's really urgent that we should do?
I mean, there are definitely other things. I really like the idea of doing this, the purchasing document that you did was incredibly helpful. In fact, we should probably follow up at this point and resend it out to the departments to look at, just because we've had a few issues with purchasing. I think there are several other things that we could do, something along those lines.
Well, why don't you do this, if you, go ahead and tell department heads that you want, what you want, have them draw up, send it to me, I'll format it. Or if you think of something that you yourself want to do, you can scribble on the back of a napkin and hand it over to me and I'll, I'll make this.
Well, I, I work almost exclusively on napkins, so that'll work out.
Okay, anything else?
We really need to get that running, up and running again, right?
We already passed the agreement, didn't we, like a month ago?
Do we have any update on that, where it's, because I haven't heard about it, and I just scanned the proposal that they had, and I was looking at it thinking, okay, you know, where are we, like where are we with that? It's not a big deal, I mean, we can go back, I can...
Eric can check with Judy.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if anybody heard anything.
Well, hey, how's your time schedule?
Going well. That's why they bought the TV, so that instead of converging on one person's desk, they can use the TV, and everyone down there can be looking and observing.
So they're flying now?
They should be.
Awesome, good to hear.
Yes.
All right, well, anything else from the commissioners? Anything from departments or committees? Any public comment? Then I guess we can adjourn. Oh, wait, 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 I'm sorry. Did we talk about the meeting on Wednesday? Is there anything you need to add to the agenda?
The only thing, the only thing that I would just say briefly is, is with the Human Services Summit and some of the other things, I'd really like to do something, or I'm going to ask that some time be set aside at the, at Wednesday's meeting in order to do something meaningful for mental health awareness month. There's some, there's a couple of things that we're working on in conjunction with Forest Warren Mental Wellness. And the other thing that I would like to, or I just wanted to share with you for your input, you know, and anything that you would be interested in, in working with or adding to the mix is, you know, as a part of Mental Health Awareness Month, doing a, like kind of a retrospective or a review of the work that we've done with BEI within the courthouse with the cleaning crew, just because the, the past six months, it'll be, I think it'll be six months in May, and they, they've really done a wonderful job and really would like to give them another opportunity to kind of review or work with them as a part of Mental Health Awareness Month. So I'll be contacting you about having like, doing a photo with them, having some, some of their staff come over and having a conversation with them and whatnot. Had, we've... We've had a lot of really good compliments from the staff in the courthouse and different people and I want to kind of document those too.
You just want like five minutes there in the department?
Yeah, yep. Nothing big, just-
Anything else? Then the agenda will stay. Okay, thanks.